So we'll begin. Good evening and welcome to the December meeting of the Town of Poughkeepsie Board of, zoning board of appeals. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. For those who are new to the procedures of the ZBA, the meeting is divided into two halves. During the first part, we hold public hearings on each of the applications that are before us. And we take these in the order in which they're listed on the agenda. And if you'd like a copy of the agenda, they're available in that little tray next to our council's desk. For each public hearing, we'll ask the applicant to come forward and to be sworn in. All testimony before the ZBA has to be sworn testimony. And we'll ask the applicant to give a very brief description of what his or her application is about. At that point, members of the board will have an opportunity to ask questions. Once these have been asked and answered, we will open the meeting to anyone from the public that wishes to address that application, but that application only. After we've heard from everyone, oh, and by the way, anyone that wishes to speak also has to be sworn in. So once we've completed that, we'll close the public hearing and move on to the next item. Once we've gone through all of the items, we will then move into the deliberation and voting phase of the meeting. During that part of the meeting, there's no further input from the public because the public hearing has been closed. But you're welcome to stay and listen to the deliberations. If you want to leave, you can call the zoning department in the morning and get the results. Okay. Let me just note that the panel that you see seated here is short, a few people. Normally, we would have Brian Coons, who was a junior planner and who was kind of the staff person assigned to the ZBA. He has resigned from the Town of Poughkeepsie and has taken a new position as the head of the building grounds at Marist College. We want to wish him well on his new job and to thank him for the time and help that he provided to us here. We're also short our secretary, Sandy Lane, who couldn't be here. But very generously, Lisa Cobb has volunteered to be the kind of recording secretary for tonight's meeting and to remind us of procedures and things that we need to do. Okay. With that, let's turn to actually the first two items on the agenda. Santiago Sanchez, 42 Pendle Road. You'll notice there are two items. One is a special use permit. The second is a set of variances. I would just remind everyone that when we can discuss these at the same time, but when it comes to voting on these, we're going to have to consider item number two first and then item number one. But for purpose of the public hearing, that doesn't make any difference. So is Mr. Sanchez here? Yes. Please come forward. Just have a seat. And just, and this goes for everyone, just make sure you speak into the microphone because we have to keep a record of the meetings. So your name?
Santiago Sanchez.
Mr. Sanchez, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, I hope you God?
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
I understand.
Okay. So would you just tell us very briefly why you're here?
Well, I wanted to have chickens in my property and I think it's going to be tough because I don't, I mean, I don't, my land is too small. But there's a reason. We got to teach the newer generations about farming. I've been farming all my life. I've worked for Adams sixteen years. And it's very important that the new generation, especially kids, understand what's all about farming instead of gaming and hanging out in the street doing nothing. That's my purpose. And the one that's more involved is my son, Christopher. He couldn't come today because he has a cancer, but he's the one that's going to be involved in farming.
Okay. And so that's why your application says it's the Christopher Chicken Barn?
Yes.
Okay. And that's your son?
That's my son.
Okay. Very good. All right. Well, Christine?
Sure. How many chickens do you have?
Well, I got five of my own and four are from my boss at my Adams.
So a total of nine?
Nine, yes.
Okay.
That's all.
Did I say a rooster?
I got rid of a rooster three months ago, like two months ago. But I did have one.
There's not one there?
No, it's no longer there anymore.
Didn't you see?
It used to be.
We saw something with a big red comb.
Comb. Looked like a rooster.
Gray and white.
No, I had it in the past.
Yes, I did.
Gray and white, huh?
No, this was last week when we were out.
This was Wednesday, this past Wednesday.
There is no such as roosters. There is one chicken that looks like a rooster, but that's the type of chicken it is. It has like a kind of something on the head.
Yeah.
Yeah, big red, big red.
Okay. Had us fooled. Looked like a rooster to me, but.
No, you can tell the difference in the rooster on the feet. They got the spurs.
Yes.
Those are chickens.
Well, I didn't get close enough to look. I'm sorry.
No, you know.
Okay. All right. Yeah, Betty?
You're going to heat or give them some sort of heat for the winter, correct?
I mean, it's tough to understand sometimes farming, but chickens, they don't need no wind, heat. As long as they are protected for the wind. Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
How long have you had them there?
One year and like eight months.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Okay. All right.
Okay, just to be clear, you said that you're not, that you're not going to heat the chicken coop? Will be no extra heat? No outside heat? No electric heat? No?
No, it's not necessary.
You intend on getting more than your nine chickens?
No, probably less. Because four, as I say, they are no mine.
Yours. Okay. Thank you.
When I was there and kind of looked into the coop or barn or whatever, it looked quite clean and I didn't smell anything. So what do you do with the waste?
Some, I mean, I spray in my garden and the rest, I take it to the farm in Clinton Corners.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
How often do you have to do that?
Probably like once a week. Depends.
Okay.
Like now, it's going to be more often because they're going to be more inside.
Right, right. Okay. But you put it in bags or cans or something and take it to a farm?
Right.
Okay. It doesn't go into the municipal garbage or anything?
No, 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 no. It goes right into a farm. It's 173 Pumpkin Lane, Clinton Corners.
Okay. Larry?
I have no questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
And you don't plan to increase the number of chickens?
No, I answered that question before, no.
Okay, okay. I wanted to make sure.
Very often in cases like this where people want to keep chickens or poultry of some kind, we have a condition on the variance that limits the number. So if we limited it at, what, eight, would that be reasonable to you?
Yes, it's pretty fair.
And the other thing that is commonly put as a condition is that there are no roosters.
Oh, no, it's not going to be a rooster.
And that's because of the noise.
Right, because of the neighbors.
Yeah, yes. I understand that. Okay.
Jim, I think there's nine chickens, he said.
Right, but four of them are not his.
Four of them are on loan. They're day camping or something.
Right, okay.
Right. So I mean, I think we have to put in a number.
I understand.
As the upper limit. I mean, because we don't want you to, you know, have a hundred.
Well, there's something that I had to say very clear. It's not for business. This is just to show my kid what's farming all about.
Right. Although the eggs must be a benefit.
Oh, they're delicious.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chair, as a technical matter on the variance, we had asked, Sandy had sent Mr. Santiago a letter, because we're missing two dimensions for the other corner of the property. So we don't have, if you look at the map, it appears that it's three feet from the one property line. And I asked that there be confirmation that it's three feet at the corner of the chicken barn area because the three feet is currently measured from the garage.
Okay.
And then if you look at the opposite corner, we're missing those two corner to property line dimensions. Were you able to get those?
On what side?
I can show you the map if it's easier. We need this measurement and this measurement.
All right. So you don't need this, you don't need this, you don't need this?
I need from that corner.
I'll get it.
My mic is up in the air.
Okay. Carmen? Mic phone down. We can't hear you.
What we may be able to do for present purposes, we have, we have numbers that are near the numbers we need and the numbers that we would be granting, if you, the board were inclined to grant a variance, would be less than that. That's why it's written up in the application as it was for one side being three feet and then the other side, we're not quite sure what those numbers are. But we know that they're less than, it appears, either forty-five feet and forty feet on the two corners.
Yeah.
But the measurements really should be taken from the corner of the chicken coop as opposed to the corner where they're taken from the edge of the garage.
The, I mean, based on the field trip, I can assure you that the garage and the chicken barn are along a single line.
Okay.
And so if the three-foot measurement from the corner of the garage, it's going to be the same. So, yeah, as far as the other, you know, if I were still in my teaching mode, I could figure out what that distance is. It's just trigonometry, but I don't have the calculator with me.
I think we had issues with most of the measurements because if this, the front of the house to the property line was sixty-eight, it's almost the same distance as it says forty-five from the back of the barn or the coop to the property line back there. So it doesn't, they don't sink. There's no scale here, so it's really difficult to figure out. And when I, nothing seemed to mesh correct. The only good news that I could tell is that it is far enough away from the back line to need be a problem. So the only real issue, I think, is the right side.
Okay.
I mean, do you agree? I couldn't make them work out at all.
Well, you said that what we needed to do is some kind of, we pick a minimum number and?
I think for purpose, since it's an existing building, what we can do is take, you know, can say that the variance is granted for the existing building and that the measurements are believed to be or, you know, words along those lines, that they're not more than three feet closer to the property line. I don't know if there was the property line marked. Could you determine whether it was three feet or?
There's a fence there. That belongs to the neighbor.
Okay. But it's pretty close to the property line.
The fence? Yeah. Yes, whatever is been left behind, behind the garage.
Like a two-foot? Okay. Yeah. So, okay. All right. So, okay. Since it's, yeah, it's an existing situation, so we'll essentially condition it on the fact that the, I mean, it's going to need a variance of some kind and so we'll, I mean, it's not a hundred feet, so it's going to be something less than that. Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board?
I just have one question for the applicant. Your neighbor in back of the chicken coop, is he a farmer as well?
Uh.
Do they have farm animals there?
No, nobody, nobody does.
No?
And on the back of the, where the chicken barn is, it's all woods.
Yeah. No, I'm thinking along that fence there and I'm looking at your neighbor in back.
From the, I mean, you got to tell me what side of the, what neighbor?
I think you're talking about the neighbor to the east.
Be to the east, yeah.
To the east? If he does farm?
I was just wondering. There was a lot of fence and I didn't see any animals. I was just wondering if he?
Oh, the fencing is because he used to have a dog.
Oh, okay.
That's why he had the fence. He fenced the whole property because of that purpose of the dog.
Okay, okay. Okay. Anything else from, all right, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 42 Pendle Road? Okay. Seeing none. There are no further questions. Is there a motion to close the public hearings for items number one and two?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recousalts? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number three, Charles and Jocelyn Card, 25 Pleasant View Road. Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
And your name is?
Stacy Owen.
Ms. Owen, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, I hope you God?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Yes.
And according to the application, you have the power of attorney for this property?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, so go ahead, please.
I'm seeking a variance in order to obtain a CO for an existing enclosed porch off the back of my parents' house.
Okay. All right. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
All right.
No questions.
Okay. I understand it's been there since 1972.
Yes.
Okay. And no further work is being done on it?
No.
Just as is?
Right.
Okay. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 25 Pleasant View Road? No, I didn't know if you were raising your hand or not. Okay. If not, all right, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recousalts? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item four, Aaron and Erica Finch, 7 Old Spackenkill Road.
Name?
Hey. And if you just state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is James Hughes and I'm the contractor for the Finches.
Okay.
Mr. Hughes, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, I hope you God?
Yes, ma'am.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay. So you want to just briefly describe what the project is?
Yes, it's a round, in-ground swimming pool in a cute little backyard, but the backyard's little. The location of the pool is predicated because of the, we have a varied propane tank on the right side. We have a very short distance to the back and there's that bluestone patio that comes off the house. Our desire was to center it, you know, on that bluestone patio, but there's, it's just a very small lot.
Christine?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
All right.
No questions.
Okay. When we were out there, if I remember correctly, the backyard is enclosed in a fence, what, let me see, what, six-foot, something like that?
Yes.
And it looks as if directly behind that fence, there's a wooded area and then it looks like a large wetland. I mean, there's no houses or anything back there.
I have no idea if that's a wetland or not, but his property does not border on that. It borders on a neighbor that has a very little tiny strip that goes directly behind his house.
Okay.
It's not bordered on the wetlands.
Okay. All right. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay.
Lisa, I have one question. I don't have anything in my record saying that he could speak on the owner's behalf, but the owner is here, so does that all right?
Yes, actually, I had cleared that up with Sandy also, so we're fine.
Okay. Okay. All right. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address 7 Old Spackenkill Road? Okay. Seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recousalts? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item five, Tinkelman Architecture, Van Wagner Road.
Good evening.
Okay. Your name?
Jason Littwick, and take over architecture.
Mr. Littwick, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, I hope you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
I do, yes.
Okay. Oh, okay, it's working.
Yep.
Can you hear?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so we're in the process now. We received site planner, original site plan approval for 33 Arlington, which allowed us to put in one retail space, one office space, and use the rest as warehouse. Currently, we're in front of site plan, doing an amended site plan approval, looking to occupy the full building with nine tenants. With that, our property is too small to provide all of the parking that's required by the zoning. So in order to that, we purchased the property north of us that will allow us to put in twenty-two parking spaces that will permit all the parking that's required to occupy this building. Right now, it's currently zoned R-20, so we're seeking two variances. One to allow the parking lot without a principal use and the second to allow the lot coverage. Thirty-five percent is required, I'm sorry, twenty-five percent is required and we're at thirty-six and a half percent.
Christine, any questions?
Questions.
Betty?
I have no question.
All right.
Excuse me, is the parking lot going to be blacktop or is it going to be that new course?
It's a little bit of both. It's in order to meet the draining requirements, this section here on the south side will be purviewous paving.
Okay, so it'll allow some drainage into the?
Correct, yep.
No more questions? Thank you.
Okay. And there'll be a crosswalk and sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay. And currently, I guess it's Van Wagner Road that's barricaded off.
Correct.
Is that going to be permanent?
As far as I understand, a town permanently closing that road, they put a gate in that is only accessible by the emergency responders.
Okay. So that it'll be Arlington Avenue will, and I understand they're going to move the stoplight so that it's more, it's centered over the, what is it, site's terrace and?
Yes. I guess it's, right now, the stoplight is more or less facing in the wrong lane on, which I believe is Van Wagner Road. So we're going to move that, we're looking to move that down so it's more in front of the right lane, so it's a little bit easier for drivers to see it. And this, I believe this, when you come down site's terrace, they're going to adjust this one as well, so it's a little bit more visible.
So that the only traffic that people walking from the parking lot will have to deal with is the, on Arlington Avenue?
Correct.
Okay. All right. When we were out there, I noticed the lot that you purchased is fairly uneven. So is the parking going to be leveled?
The parking, this section of the site that we place this on, there's going to be a little bit of cutting and filling. This will be, this is a lot of cutting to put in the driveway, but it was the best location for it. We'll have a couple retaining walls to make that happen and this portion back is all at a ten degrees or ten percent grade.
Okay, all right. And then the rest of the lot, in your drawing, you show a lot of trees and whatever. I assume those are the existing trees or?
Existing, yep. We have a landscape plan that we submitted to the planning board that will kind of, you know, fix this up a little bit. We spoke with a couple of the residents in the area and we're going to add some more landscaping for the headlights and stuff like that as well.
Okay, okay. All right, Larry?
Is there going to be anything done with the utility pole?
No, we're hoping we don't have to touch that. We kind of planned everything to go around it.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay. All right, anything else from the board? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the Tinkelman Architecture application for whatever that parcel on Wagner, Van Wagner Road is?
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Kathleen Gibson Ferris.
Ms. Kathleen Gibson Ferris, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, I hope you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury. Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay. I have a couple concerns. This is going to go from single-family R20 residential to commercial, um, parking lot. My property backs up to the full length of this property.
On, on which side?
Can I show you?
Yes, please.
This is my property line right here.
Okay.
So I would, um, like the board to consider a sight and sound barrier between that line. There were several larger trees that were in that area, but a lot of them have been taken down or fallen down, um, over the years. So, um, with that going in there, there's going to be, if you have 22 cars, opening, closing doors, our bed, one bedroom or two bedrooms of the house are on that backside, it's going to be a lot of noise. I don't know what the hours are going to be for those commercial properties, but I heard there's going to be some kind of, um, health club or something going in there, and they may have extended hours or early morning hours. So that's going to be a concern. And, um, we're planning on putting our house on the market in approximately a year. I'm going to retire. I have a concern that a part, a big parking lot in the back of our property, since that was supposed to be residential, is not going to be too curb, you know, friendly, curb appeal friendly. So I'd just like the board to consider, you know, our, our part in this. And that was about it, just, uh, some kind of sight and sound. It could be either a six-foot fence, a solid fence of some sort. I know I saw that they were putting a partial chain link fence, it looked like, to here. But our property, this whole line and the retaining wall?
Yeah, you're, you're going to have to speak into the microphone, I'm afraid.
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
There is a chain link fence, it looked like, that goes one, two, three, four parking spaces in, but that's it. So it either could be a, a solid fence, or maybe some closely planted tall shrubbery, maybe, something that would keep, baffle the noise in the, in the, um, sight line.
Okay.
I don't know what the, um, the planning, um, he, he did say that there was some kind of, um, plantings or something that would be.
Yeah. If, if, if I remember correctly, um, there's a stockade fence back in there somewhere.
Yeah, there's a partial, by our, our garage, there's a partial stockade fence.
Is, is that yours?
Yes.
Okay.
And then there's a partial dog, we have a dog, and that's another problem. The dog would be barking all the time with the, with people, you know, going in and out, in and out. The dog will be constantly barking if there's no baffle at all there, so. And then people will be calling, complaining that the dogs make a noise, so.
Any of the board members have any questions?
I have a question. Is, is your concern, um, beyond the noise factor, being able to see the parking lot from your house?
For, for the property value, um, we're going to retire, um, I'm going to retire in like a, a year and a half, and, and trying to be able to sell our property with this big parking lot behind our house, you know, when it was supposed to be residential, you know? I don't mind it going there, but I don't want the people who are coming to see this big, you know, 22 space parking lot behind the house. That's just, when it was all woods, you know, before, so. And it could have been a house there, but that would have been two or three cars there, not 22.
Okay.
Is, is this something that you would prefer plantings or, or a fence?
Yes.
Either one?
Either one would suit me, as long as it was like a solid fence, not, not a chain link fence, because it would just be.
I understand.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Yeah.
Hi.
Good evening.
Ms. Salvatore, Van Wagner Road.
Does she need to be sworn in?
Yes.
Oh.
Don't I?
I don't know, I'm asking, okay. Ms. Salvatore, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I hope you got?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment that, um, I live on the other side of Van Wagner Road, and my property faces that, um, particular property. Um, I won't really be able to see as much as the other neighbor will see from her backyard, but it is my front yard where my master bedroom faces, and also my front porch. And my concern is just kind of the same thing. And actually, we did go over to Tinkelman's, um, office last week, or whenever that was. Maybe it was this week, last week. And looked at the plans and just, you know, voiced our concerns that we would like some kind of, um, maybe on the corner piece, some kind of trees or something so that we wouldn't see the headlights and, and, um, stuff like that. And I kind of just wanted to state that, and, you know, and I don't know what the future is for the rest of the site, but, you know, it is directly front, in front of my house, and it was residential, so. That's all I wanted to state.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else from the public? Okay. I think I've got a couple more questions, so, um, if you could, if you could, um, come back to the mic. All right. Couple of things that were raised. One had to do with the hours of operation. You know, if, if it's, if it's daytime, then headlights probably aren't an issue, but if they're... So what can you tell us?
Right now, I don't know, uh, the tenants that are coming in, I'm not sure of their hours. The one tenant, uh, Swaddle and Swaddle, I believe their hours are probably like eight to five. I don't think they have nighttime hours. The, um, one, uh, tenant that was spoken of, I can't really release the name, which will be a sort of fitness. As per parking, she will be there early in the morning and later in the evening, which means the other tenants will not be open at that time. So the parking should be mostly in our own, uh, 33 Arlington, not in the adjacent parking lot. But again, as the tenants fill, we will know more about what their hours of operations will be.
Right. And tenants, of course, can come and go.
Yeah, and they're, you know, it's, uh, it's retail, there's a, a potential hair salon, a spa type business. So I can't see too many being open, you know, late at night.
Okay. And you, you mentioned that, um, along the Van Wagner Road, that in your, in your, um, negotiations with the, the planning board, that you've put in some screening there?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, so that would, that would help, um, Ms. Salvatore's?
Yeah, at the planning board, we showed it may, our landscaping was mostly at the entrance. After meeting with Ms. Salvatore last week, we decided we will provide some landscaping along the northeast corner, which will, you know, help hide any kind of headlights from her, you know, bedroom view.
What about plantings then on the other side?
We, we didn't put too much there, because one, we had the retaining wall, which is about five feet tall. So the headlights are going to be down below that. And as you get further north of the site, the grade actually goes up, so the headlights won't be an issue for the adjacent neighbors, because they'll be pointing into the ground.
Yeah. Okay.
So it's more or less, as Ms. Ferris stated, that she might be able to see the parking lot, because she'll be looking down at it, which I'm not quite, you know, that's, we'll do the best we can to, to satisfy that.
Right. So would it, would it be possible to put some kind of plantings along the top of that retaining wall?
Along the, the west side?
You're going to be disturbing that anyway, and, you know, if, if some kind of, you know, even, you know, you...
Sometimes, yeah.
I mean, you're right, there, there's going to be a five, five-foot grade, so we don't need big things, but, but maybe something.
I don't see why we couldn't have put some kind of, you know, like boxwoods or something along, that'll be there all year round, that could provide some screening.
Okay, all right. I think that would be, uh, be real benefit. Okay. All right, any, any other questions from the board?
I only see the issues as being lighting, noise, and visual. So I'm, what I would like to do is tell the same people that spoke tonight to go to the planning board, because they really have control over, um, those kind of issues, far more control than we do.
Well, I mean, we, we, we can put a condition in that, that some, some kind of planting be provided along the top of the retaining wall. But, but you're right, ultimately, it's up to the planning board to specify what, what that might be.
And what about the lot in back of it, if, if that were to get sold to a residential building? Would that be impacted by the, you know, lack of?
Well, you, you mean, I mean, along the top?
Yes.
Yeah. Down the north, north side. Yeah, I mean, that's currently vacant.
Currently, yes.
And I guess the way I look at this, you, there's a pretty big buffer area there that's, that is not being disturbed. So it's, you know, already got a lot of trees there. I don't know.
Okay.
I think, you know, that's...
Yeah, 70, well, 73 feet, if not more, is that next property line, if that one's disturbed.
Okay.
Growth that's there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, comments?
There's someone in the back.
Oh. Yes. Yeah, come on up. Okay, and your name, please?
My name is Dan Mattson.
Mr. Mattson, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I hope you got?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes.
I own the property at 40 Arlington Avenue.
Okay, and where would that be?
Does this work? My property is located right here and right there.
Oh, okay.
Okay, it's a garage door place.
Yes, okay, Dutch's overhead doors.
Oh.
Okay.
Couple concerns I have with the new parking area here. And that's, you got to put it someplace. But we have an area in, on the north side of their building that our delivery trucks come early in the morning, and they park right here, as well as they park in front of our building. With all this additional traffic going to be here, I really can't afford to lose that parking area there for our delivery trucks.
Okay, I, I guess I don't quite understand...
Is that your property?
Why providing additional parking would, would impact your situation? I mean, it seems to me adding this parking lot is going to make things better.
I understand that.
Okay.
But I understand if you're going to have a gym or something like that, you're hoping to get a lot more people to come, and they'll be looking for additional places to park. So if we lose those spots early in the morning when our big delivery trucks come, they'll be parking in the middle of the street.
Okay.
If you'd like to see what that's like, come any morning, seven o'clock in the morning.
Okay. Have, have you, um, been to the planning board about this?
No.
Okay, because, I mean, this, this is really a kind of a traffic, street issue, and that is, you know, way beyond our, our, our powers. And, you know, this, this, this is going to be something that probably, I don't know, either the police department or the, or the, um, the, the planning board, which does have to take into account traffic issues, um, needs to consider.
As I said, my, my concern is you're going to have a lot more traffic in this area. I'm not sure it's going to handle it all.
And it's not, it's not clear that it's going to be coming on Arlington Avenue, which quite frankly is kind of a secret street, you know? It's not one that people really know and use a lot.
It has been since the 80s.
Right, I mean, it's, it, the way it's laid out is peculiar. But like I say, I don't, I, you know, I, I don't think that's directly relevant to the, to the question before us, and we, I, we really don't have the, um, the, the powers to deal with that. So it really is the planning board.
Okay, I'll get in touch with the planning board.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have, I have one question. Do you, do your delivery trucks park in the road? Is that what the issue is? Or they park on your property?
They park in front of our building, on the edge of the street, or in front of our north, our south fence in the street.
Okay. And they all come at the same time?
No, we get a delivery every morning. So it's usually the same time, but it's a different, different supplier.
Okay.
Jim, I, I just wanted to ask you one question. Is, is it, um, is it a case where you could have a sign for overhead doors only, the parking? So that nobody else can, can park there?
That'll just keep the honest people out.
Pardon me?
You can put the sign there.
Well, there are, you know, you could create delivery zones, kind of thing. And, but again, I think that's, that's an issue that the police department and the planning board have to sort out. Okay. You know, as, as they say, you know, that's, that's way beyond our pay grade. Thank you. Okay. Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, if not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recousels? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I am number six, and I'm going to do my best here. Go Indurgit and Interpreet Munder, um, at 15 Gwen's Way and Crackhour Drive. Are the Munders here?
I don't think they're here. My name is Mike Classy, and I'm in the process of purchasing, purchasing the property. And there's a language barrier with them, and their real estate agent was supposed to be here, but had to go out of state at the last minute.
Okay. Okay, um, okay.
Could you spell your name?
It's Classy, C.L.A.S.S.E.Y., first name is Michael.
Okay. Is there any document that authorizes you to speak for them?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Can I speak as a person of the public?
Well, I don't think we're going to be able to act on this without really an authorization for somebody that can speak and act on their behalf.
Can I explain the situation, because it's pretty straightforward?
You can certainly open the public hearing and take testimony, and I just will close it and continue it until next month, correct?
Yeah, okay, so...
Okay, Mr. Classy, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Yes.
Okay, so, can you shed some light on all this?
I can, because I'm the one that found out that the property needed the variance when I was looking into purchasing the property. So, it is a private road.
Okay, so, the Munders are the current owners?
They are the current owners.
Okay.
They decided not to build, for whatever reason, and put the house, or the property up for sale. It's on a private road, so that the variance is required because it needs to have access to emergency vehicles.
Right.
It is the lot, last lot on the subdivision that is undeveloped. I did talk to the zoning administrator, the houses that are in there now previously got approval for that zoning, so it's already been noted that the road meets the requirements to get emergency vehicles in. So, like I said, I'm trying to purchase the property, property sale is contingent about getting the variance approved before the sale goes through.
Oh, okay, okay. Counsel? I mean...
The board can take judicial notice, because it's a quasi-judicial board, of the fact that the deed has been submitted, the deed is duly recorded, the property, the adjacent lot, Gwen's Road, is listed on the parcel access as an accessway. I'm not sure that there are any facts that are not provided within documents that the board can take judicial notice of that the applicant would be required to provide. I don't know that there's any testimony that the applicant would add unless there are questions, and but I would see what else the public comment is, and then we can decide at the end if the board feels that it needs sworn testimony from the applicant.
So that, so that, we have all the information that we need to make the decision, I guess is what you're saying.
It's possible, that it's, there are additional public that would like to make comments on this, and we can, the board can decide at the conclusion of whatever public testimony is offered, whether it feels it has enough information to make a determination.
Okay, okay. All right, so, I guess, let me first, is there, are there questions from the board? Okay, if not, then, somebody, you wanted to say something?
Yes.
Okay, please do.
And I'm glad that Mike is interested in buying that property. My name is Douglas Hurst. I own fifteen Gwen's Way, I own half the property.
Mr. Hurst, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
So, help me God, yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Sure. Okay, again, I'm glad that Mike, and I did meet him several weeks ago, interested in looking at the property there. I spoke with Gwen Brenner and Scott just on Friday. Gwen had expressed interest in possibly selling the property that would give the new owners access, but between the property line and our McAdam driveways, which is approximately fifteen, excuse me, twenty to twenty-five feet from the property line to the driveway, and the length of the actual property, and they may be interested in selling that. The questions, or I can tell you that I went through the same process, and it was fun, because the property does not border, you know, it's not on a public street, and the street Gwen and I own, which is private, and that's our McAdam driveway, which should be written in the, in the access and on the county deed, that they have access and egress using that. So, I hope that they are able to get their variance without any problems. The couple of questions that I had, though, the road maintenance agreement, that would continue to pertain to any of the new owners, I know that Mark and Cheryl and Anthony and Margaret and Gwen and myself have a road maintenance agreement that should be already on the deed. The question as far as building, the Munders are selling the parcel, but I know that Marshall spent a lot of time as far as building restrictions, as far as the type of the house, that it couldn't be a raised ranch construction, it had to be so many square feet, so on and so forth, and it's my understanding that this is, again, filed with the county, and it's on the deed, and hopefully Mike already knows about that. Terrific. Would the zoning board be involved as far as, I know that Marshall had worked with Bill and Kay Comisar as far as surveying, if we were to subdivide that acre of property that we both own, so that the parcels in front of the existing homes there with Anthony and Margaret, and possibly Mike, and I'm sorry, I didn't get your daughter's name, but that's neither here nor there, would the zoning board be involved in approving that? Because at the time, I remember Marshall and Bill Comisar saying that there were subdivisions that were just getting started at that time, and that it would be possible to subdivide that parcel.
I'm, I am not sure that the ZBA would be directly involved in that. As a, sort of a general rule, if Mike, please correct me, these kinds of deed restrictions and covenants are a private matter, and so the parties would have to negotiate and work that out, or in, you know, in the worst case, sue each other, or, you know, but, yes, but that, we are not involved essentially in the, either the formulation or the enforcement of deed restrictions and whatever. What, you know, I think, I think the document that is most relevant to us is the maintenance agreement, which I note has a provision for essentially new members, you know, expanding the people that would be party to that, which, and that essentially, from our point of view, ensures that there will always, that people will always have access, and that it will always be maintained in such a way that emergency vehicles can, you know, easily and safely get in and out.
We hope we never need their services, but I agree wholeheartedly, yes.
Exactly, but I think that's, you know, the provision that you're looking for relief from is, is that the property have frontage on an improved public street, and well, and that's because of emergency vehicles. If you're meeting that requirement through a private arrangement, as long as the road is maintained and is open, you know, we're happy. So...
Terrific.
So, beyond that, I think, in terms of the kind of building and whatever, I think that's for you guys to work out privately.
Can you speak again, please, about, you said something about a twenty to twenty-five foot strip between a paved out area, is that between the property that they wouldn't?
That's between the parcel lines, the end of where the house property is, to the driveway. And again, it should be written into, giving them access and egress through the property line, which would allow them the variance that they are requesting.
Is the implication that the applicants would have to pave or connect to, that the, there's a parcel number for the, what I believe you're calling the driveway?
Yes.
And what I think I'm hearing, and I'm just trying to make sure I'm correct, is that the entire, that parcel is not paved in its entirety, that sort of down the center there's a driveway, and there's a twenty to twenty-five foot strip of unpaved area that would, the frontage of the lot that's proposed to be purchased, that is not quite paved, is not yet paved, is that correct?
That hopefully won't be paved, but yes, there's a difference between where the driveway is going to their property line, and it's probably twenty to twenty-five feet.
Okay.
Okay. Who currently maintains the road?
Gwen, myself, Mark, all of the neighbors.
I mean, I'm talking about plowing and that sort of thing?
We have had an agreement where I have been taking care of plowing, for the most part, and then if the weather is that bad, we have a backup contingency, so that we keep our roads plowed. We're usually one of the first in the neighborhood, and have been for the last ten years, at least ten-plus years since I've been there.
So, you do it yourself, or do you hire this out?
Both. We, I've done the snow removal the majority of the time, and if it wasn't turning to rain and going to be warm for the next several days, I would have plowed it, because all it takes is that one time, not plowing it and allowing it to freeze, and then you're in a lot of trouble.
Okay.
And again, we hope never to have to have the emergency vehicles come in, but, and we do our best to maintain the drive and keep it serviceable and open.
Okay. Okay, any other questions from the board, or anyone in the audience? Okay, so, can we close the public hearing and proceed, or?
I don't see, unless there's information that the board thinks it needs, that it doesn't have to presently make the determination, based on the information that's in the application, a substantial portion of which is public records that's recorded.
Yeah.
I think that the board could do that, and the testimony of the public.
Well, and, I mean, the crucial piece of property here is that parcel that is the road, and you're one of the part owners of it.
Yes, I am.
Yeah, so, I think, from that point of view, I think, I'm comfortable proceeding on this. Okay, all right. In that case, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Coozles? Okay, good, very much. Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, that brings us to the end of the public hearings. Do we want a quick recess, or should we go in?
Plow on. Move on.
Move on, okay, move on. Okay, so, back to the top of the agenda, as I mentioned, item one is a special use permit, but in order to act on that, we have to have already granted the required variances. So, let's go to item number two, Santiago Sanchez, forty-two Pendle Road. These are variances, two variances, A, keeping farm animals, including chickens, on a parcel of less than five acres, and B, the housing of chickens in a structure located less than a hundred feet from any property line. This is a type-two action, so there's no environmental review that we need to do. The county has declared this a matter of local concern, and there's no staff report, so we'll have to come up with findings ourselves. Okay, all right, on the variances, any comments?
The only concern I had Lisa somewhat addressed, and that was the fact that we don't know exactly, for part of it, exactly how much, or how many feet we are carrying it by, but Lisa seemed to cover that.
Well, how do we, how do we phrase it? That the variances are to allow the existing structure to be located where it is?
The variances are to allow the use of an existing structure, and it, so the footprint of the structure is what it is presently. I wonder whether the assessment records or anything that presently exists in the village, in the town files, may already have some indication of where these buildings are that might be better, and I'm not suggesting that the board delay its deliberations for that basis, but certainly it's conditioned upon the existing footprint of the building, the variance of not more than, to allow it to be not closer than three feet, assuming that that's, the board is comfortable that it's not less than three feet currently from the property line, and estimate what the other two side variances are, but I feel comfortable conditioning the variance on the existing building.
Okay.
Alternately, if the board wanted to be more precise in it, it could be conditioned upon the applicant providing some sort of a survey of where the building is, but I don't know that the board wants to make the applicant spend, put that, go through that expense.
Yeah. No, I mean, it seems to me, if we just simply condition it on the use of the existing chicken barn, and the footprint is the existing footprint, I think that achieves what we want to do. Okay, in terms of the findings, as usual, there are five criteria. One, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. The board finds that the use of this structure to house chickens has been there for over a year and a half. There's no evidence to suggest that it has changed the character of the neighborhood, or is a detriment to nearby properties, and that with proper maintenance and without roosters, the impact on neighboring properties should be minimal. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Given the small size of the lot, there's really no other place where a structure housing the chickens could be located. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, it's substantial from a mathematical point of view, very substantial. On the other hand, the applicant has been careful to minimize the impacts by keeping it clean and, you know, a small size, so that the actual impact is not as great as the numbers might suggest. Four, whether the proposed variance will have an... Four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. As we've mentioned, by regulating, by limiting the number of animals and the types, namely no roosters, and by providing regular cleaning of the structure, this use will not have an adverse effect. And five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the board, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of an area variance. The board finds that, in a sense, this is self-created, a decision to keep chickens, but that this is not grounds for denying the variance. Okay, any comments or amendments to?
Well said.
Findings?
You had discussed whether putting a number on the chickens?
Yeah, I think we talked about eight chickens, and then no, no roosters. And I would also then, also add the condition that the structure be cleaned on a weekly basis, and any waste materials be transported out of the town. And I think that's exactly what he said he would do. Okay.
Is that a motion?
Actually, those are the findings. So Christine, you can make the motion and just reference the findings.
Okay. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number two. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the five findings that you just went through.
Okay.
Okay.
And then?
With the conditions?
Yeah.
That there be no more than eight chickens, that there be no roosters, that it be cleaned on a weekly basis, and?
Waste transported off.
And that the waste be transported off of the property.
Okay. All right, and you're moving that?
So move.
Okay. So you're second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusal? Okay, the variance is granted. All right, that brings us then back to item number one, which is a special use permit to allow the housing of poultry, namely chickens, in an existing structure on the property. This is an unlisted action, so I move that the ZBA declare it South Lead Agency for purposes of environmental review of item number one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I move that the ZBA further finds that, based on the short-form environmental EAF, that the proposed action in item number two will have no, or item number one, excuse me, will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Let me just note that on the agenda, there's a typo. The section that requires this special use permit is Article 210-16C3. There is no Section 169. Okay. Okay, again, in our ordinances, there's a list of criteria that have to be satisfied in order for a special use permit to be issued. There are four general ones, and then there are some specific ones. So, A, that there should be no detrimental effect by the establishment of such use on other uses within the district. And the board finds that with the conditions in place for the granting of the variance, that these will minimize the impact of the keeping of chickens on other uses, and so there will be no detrimental effect by the establishment of this. B, that such use will be in harmony with the orderly development of the district and the location, nature, and height of buildings, walls, fences, and parking areas, will not discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent lands. The board notes that this is in an area where I believe most of the lots are already developed, so this will have no impact on new development, and we've already considered the effect that this would have on existing structures. C, that all structures, equipment, and materials shall be reasonably accessible for fire and police protection. That exists, there's a driveway that leads right up to the garage, and the garage is adjacent to the chicken barn. D, that the use meets the prescribed requirements for the district in which located, including minimum yard requirements for the district, and we have already dealt with this by granting a variance for those yard requirements. Okay, then, in terms of special use performance standards, there are a number of these that we need to consider. Many of them simply don't apply, but we'll go through them anyway. One, noise. The maximum noise level shall not exceed the maximum established under the Charter 139 of the Town Code. We've already restricted roosters. Without roosters, chickens are pretty quiet animals. Two, discharge of water, this does not apply beyond the normal drainage of a house. Three, traffic access, again, this is, this does not apply. Four, parking, again, does not apply, there's no retail sales or anything that's going on here. Five, circulation, this is a single-family home, there's no interior circulation system. Six, landscaping and screening. The location of the present building is screened by some of the other structures, and particularly in the back, it's a wooded area, so this has been satisfied, and no trees or anything are being taken down. Seven, character and appearance. Based on our site visit, the chicken barn was clean, had no odor, and the existing structure seems to me satisfies that, the character and appearance. Historic and natural resources, again, this is a single-family residential lot, this doesn't apply. Sewage treatment and water supply, I believe both of these are municipal water and sewer, and we've already had a condition about the waste products produced by the chickens. Ten, size and scale. The location and size of the proposed use, it's a reasonable size for the proposed use, and in any case, we have granted the variances to allow it. Eleven, the height and location of buildings, again, this is, the existing structures are appropriate for a single-family house. Additional safeguards and conditions, we have already added those to the area variance as passed in item number two. All right, those are the, then, the findings for the special use permit. Any questions, comments, additions, changes? Should we, what, add a condition that the, what, the dimensions are what they are?
No, all this special use permit.
Okay.
Now, that was on the focus, right.
Okay, okay, good. Okay, if there are no further discussion of this, Betty, you want to do?
Sure, I move to approve the request for a special use permit set forth in item number one. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony gathered during the public hearing, and the results of site visits by board members, and that it meets the criteria set forth in the Town Code as just read by yourself.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to approve the special use permit in item number one. No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusal? Okay, the permit is granted. Okay. And I would just note that a number of us on the board have dealt with very similar kinds of requests, and there is very little in our Town Code that addresses particularly chickens, and I would respectfully ask the town board to reconsider this, and maybe there's an addition to the code that could be made that would deal with chickens in particular, but I'll just leave it at that. Item number three, Charles and Jocelyn Card, 25 Pleasant View Road. Okay, is the variance to allow an existing enclosed porch to be located 16 feet from the side lot line, where 20 feet is required. This is a type-two action, so we don't have to worry about that, and I believe we have what is in effect a staff report here, if I can find it. Come on, come on. Okay. And this is, thanks to Lisa Cobb, who is both our counsel and staff for tonight. Okay, all right, and here are the findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced, after review of the facts and testimony, as well as the board's observation of site conditions, the board finds as follows. The porch is existing and not likely to change the overall character of this neighborhood, or cause any inconvenience or annoyance to the neighborhood or neighboring properties. Whether the benefits can be achieved by some other means, the board finds that the porch is existing, alternate locations for the porch are not feasible. Whether the variance is substantial, mathematically, the requested deviation from the side yard setback, to allow a setback of 16 feet, where 20 feet is required, is not overly substantial. In addition, the porch is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood and other houses in the area, making the requested variance appear even less substantial. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions, the porch is existing, the use and its construction are otherwise consistent with the neighborhood and other changes and modifications that have been made to other nearby homes, the impact on the environment and neighborhood is minimal. And finally, whether it was self-created, the hardship is self-created, however, the relative size of the requested variance and the potential impact, the proposed addition to surrounding property is not substantial, and the fact that the hardship is self-created does not preclude the granting of the variance. And so, these are the findings for item number three. Okay, if there are no changes to the findings, Art, you want to do this one?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number three. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. Approving this variance, the board adopts this finding.
We have determinations? We just did determinations? Yeah, we just did the findings, yeah.
Determinations found in items one through five of the staff report.
Yeah.
No conditions?
No.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I mean, I think this one has been there since 1972, and it's actually very similar to other houses along that street. Okay, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusal? Okay. Item number four, Aaron and Erica Finch, 7 Old Spackenkill Road. Is a variance to allow the construction of an in-ground swimming pool to be located three feet from the rear property line, and 10 feet from the side lot line, where 15 feet is required for both. It's a type-two action, so we don't have to do any environmental determination, and I think, again, we have a staff report, and I will quickly summarize. Oh, oops. Hmm, we don't have a staff report.
Technically, you didn't have a staff report on either of them, what you have, or proposed resolutions for the board, but they include findings, so you have proposed findings as a fine, classify them, but.
But in the, in the one that I have here, it talks about a porch, and not a swimming pool.
We'll fix that.
Okay.
All right. That was lucky.
Here we go. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, the board finds that the proposed swimming pool is located in a backyard that is completely enclosed by a six-foot fence, so the, and it's an in-ground pool, which means it's low, so that there is, it's not likely to change the overall character of the neighborhood, in fact, most people won't even see it. The board also notes that the property immediately north of the proposed pool is a large area of woods and what appear to be wetlands, and so there's nobody there that's going to be inconvenienced by this. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method, the board finds that, given the size of the backyard, there's really no location that would not require a variance of some kind.
And the applicant testified to, was it, it was?
Underground propane tank.
The propane tank and patio restricted where he could actually put the pool.
Right, so there are existing uses that would not allow the location of a pool. Let's see. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, the rear yard is substantial, but in this case, there's no other uses on the adjacent properties that are going to be affected by it. The side lot line variances are not very great, and is not going to have a substantial impact on neighboring properties, especially given the fence. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, the board finds that the... or environmental conditions, the board finds that the swimming pool per se will have minimal impact and that, given the screening, there will be little visual impact. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it is self-created in the sense that they chose to build a pool in the backyard, but this doesn't preclude granting the variance. So with those as findings, we can turn to the variance itself. Okay. I move that the board approve the request for a variance set forth in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and the result of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations one through five just reviewed.
Second.
Okay, so move and seconded, okay. If there's any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusal's? Okay, item number four is granted. Okay, item five, Tinkelman Architecture on Van Wagner Road. Two variances, one to allow an accessory use, namely parking, to be located on a different lot from the principal use, and B, lot coverage of 36.5 percent where 25 percent is permitted. The, this is an unlisted action, but the planning board is the lead agency for this, and they've issued a negative declaration, so we need not. Okay, discussion?
This project in general is such an improvement to the area and is making use of existing buildings, and that's usually a good thing. Having said that, I think we have to appreciate the impact it does have on neighbors. This is retail coming in. This is not just a few houses going up. It's retail, and it is going to be traffic. But I'm hopeful that Tinkelman is really going to address the visual and the noise issues, because I think that's only fair to these neighbors, and they didn't speak against the project altogether. It's just that they know it's going to have an impact, and it could be substantial.
Okay, so what do you suggest?
Well, I don't know exactly what kind of barriers they want for noise and for visual, whether it's, he did talk about retaining wall being there and a fence, that's a possibility, and some serious planting.
Okay, anybody else?
I think that the planning board is far wiser than we are in that area, because I think they have experience in, you know, advising the applicant what they need to plant, not plant, what type of a fence and where it should be to take care of visual issues, and, because I think there's going to be a lighting issue as well. And I think I have confidence that the planning board can handle.
Well, I think it's up to us to have mentioned it, at least.
Yes.
And have some kind of a condition, because they came before this board with their complaint.
Can we?
Yeah, which is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would support a condition that would talk about some kind of plantings that would screen certainly on the east and west sides, and I think maybe leave it to the judgment of the planning board, whether you need it on the north side as well. I would, however, my suggestion would be we'd talk about plantings. And I don't like the idea of a fence. I mean, they're going to go in and they're going to do some leveling, and so on the west side, there's going to be a retaining wall.
Right.
And putting a solid fence on top of the retaining wall, it's going to be just this big blank wall. I think it's not going to be very attractive.
Didn't the gentleman from Tinkelman also mention the fact that that retaining wall, because of the grade of the property, was going to be approximately five feet higher than the surface of the parking lot? And one of the neighbors that made the concern mentioned a six-foot fence. That might all be well and good on a level piece of property, but I don't think a fence of that size would be necessary, given the grade of the property, as it was explained to us today.
Yeah.
So the natural grade is going to take care of some of that, and plantings probably could be the way, you know, very attractive way, and they don't have to be, they don't have to be tall trees because of the grade of the property.
Right, and they could go along the, you know, the edge of the retaining wall. It would actually be.
So we're probably better off deferring to the planning board.
Yeah, so I think we should, I'm in favor of granting the variances with the condition that some kind of appropriate screening in the form of plantings be provided with the specifications left up to the planning board.
There you go.
Does that?
That works.
Does that work?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Okay, Larry, you get this one. Let me, here's the template.
I move that the board approve the request for a variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. Approving this variance, the board adopts as findings.
The, it proves as findings as follows, okay.
Oh, you know, the applicant has some nice. The applicant has some nice findings.
Does he?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all right, so we can, oh, here, all right. Okay, I would, the only thing I would add is in number one, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood. And I would simply add to the applicant's comments that the additional screening provided by plantings will mitigate the visual and lighting effects on neighborhood properties. So that it shows, okay. So otherwise, I think you can just say, we adopt as findings the amended comments found in pages two and three of the application.
Okay.
In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the amended.
Comments.
Comments as found in pages two and three on the applicant's application.
Okay.
Second.
And then we have as a condition that.
Plantings?
Yeah. I've forgotten, well, I think we need to, do we have it already? Do we need to repeat it?
No.
No, fine, okay.
I still second.
All right.
I still second.
Don't move. I still second it.
Okay, all right. If there are any further, okay, any further comments from the board? Motion to approve made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusal's? And item number six, Gundar and Indepreet Mundar, 15 Gwen's Way. So variance to allow the construction of a building that does not have frontage on an approved, improved public street or highway. This is a type two action. The county says it's a matter of local concern, and we have some comments here, I think. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if you pull it up, it might be helpful to read the few of the whereas clauses because I incorporated them by reference with the facts that I think the board needs to take into account in the proposed resolution.
Okay. Whereas the town of Poughkeepsie ZBA has received an application from Mr. and Mrs. Mundar for an area variance involving property located on Krakauer Drive/Gwen's Way, tax lot number so-and-so, for relief from the New York Town Law 280, which prohibits the issuance of a permit for the construction of any building unless the property has frontage on an approved, improved public street or highway. And whereas the application proposes to use tax lot number so-and-for access to Robin Road and improved public street, and whereas tax lot number such-and-so is currently privately owned, and whereas the use of tax lot number so-and-so is currently designated as land use class 692, which use includes miscellaneous roads, streets, highways, and parkways, express or otherwise according to Dutchess County parcel access, and whereas tax lot number so-and-so is presently improved as a road or street, and whereas the deed for the applicant's lot number contains an express right-of-way over tax lot number so-and-so, and whereas tax lot number so-and-so is burdened by, I'm not, I just can't read all these numbers. Is burdened, I know, I know, this is bad. Is burdened by a private road maintenance agreement duly filed in the office of Dutchess County Clerk as document number O220034652. And whereas the project site is located in the residence, single-family, 2,000 square feet district, and whereas Town Law 280G3 permits the zoning board of appeals to grant an area variance, providing relief to the applicant from the determination of the zoning administrator, and whereas the granting of an area variance is a type two action under the SICER regulations, and whereas after due and proper notice, a public hearing was held on this matter on June 12, 2016, and whereas.
Wasn't held on June, it was held in December. I'll fix that typo.
I misread it, December 12, 2016. Oops, how did I get June? Wishful thinking, too much shoveling snow. Whereas a motion was made and seconded to grant the variance requested, and whereas after due deliberation, including careful consideration of the standard of review for an area variance, namely, the benefit to the applicant if the variance is granted, as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community of such grant, the ZBA has determined that the criteria for the issuance of an area variance had been met specifically. A, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. After review of the facts and testimony, as well as the board's observation of site conditions, the board finds as follows: The requested variance would allow the construction of a single-family home on a lot designated for that use. Is a, okay, no, wait a minute, let's see. Would allow the construction of a single-family home on a lot designated for that use, oh, in a residential area, so there's a typo there. Containing such uses, as such construction will not change the overall character of this neighborhood or cause any inconvenience or annoyance to the neighborhood or neighboring properties, the board finds that the existing private road is suitably improved and pursuant to the filed maintenance agreement will remain so. The board further finds that the private road is adequate and sufficient for access to the subject property by safety vehicles and personnel. B, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. After review of the facts and testimony, as well as the board's observation of site condition, the board finds as follows: The lot was established with access only across this private road; no alternatives exist that would be feasible for the applicant to pursue. C, whether the requested area variance is substantial, after review of the facts and testimony, as well as the board's observation of site condition, the board finds as follows: In light of the dedication of the adjacent lot as a private road and the existence of a filed permanent maintenance agreement for the private road, the board finds that the requested variance is not substantial. D, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district, after review of the facts and testimony, as well as the board's observation of site condition, the board finds as follows: The requested variance would allow the construction of a single-family home on a lot designated for that use in a, okay, another typo, in a residential area containing such uses. The proposed use of the adjoining lot for access to Robin Road is consistent with the neighborhood; the impact on the environment and neighborhood of allowing the access across that parcel is minimal. E, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. After review of the facts and testimony, as well as the board's observation of site conditions, the board finds as follows: The hardship does not appear to be self-created; the applicants did not create the landlocked lot. In addition, the potential impact of the access to the surrounding properties is negligible. Now therefore be it resolved, the ZBA grants the area variance requested by Gundar Durgit and Indepreet Mundar for an area variance involving property located on Krakauer Drive/Gwen's Way, tax lot number 615901080790-0000, for relief from New York Town Law 280, which prohibits the issuance of a permit for the construction of any building unless the property has frontage on an approved, improved public street or highway. So move.
Second.
Okay. All right, you got all that?
You got it again?
Yeah, what was that again? Okay. Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to approve the variance in item number six. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Good. All right. There are two more. There are two more matters on our agenda. One is a request from the Town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board, serve as lead agency for the environmental review of a, I guess this is a renovation of the McDonald's on North Road.
It is.
Okay.
But it's not going to affect the footprint.
The same footprint?
Well, if you want, they need another drive-through window.
Oh.
Which is the norm, I guess two drive-throughs is the norm.
Okay.
The footprint of the building will be the same according to the order.
Okay. All right. So I move that the ZBA approve the request of the planning board to serve as lead agency for 3460 North Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The second is a request from the planning board to serve as lead agency for the proposed Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union, 2373 South Road. This is the, what, the intersection with IBM Road, and it's where the.
Treasure Chest, or the.
The old Treasure Chest, then it was Capolas. Yeah, and then it was Cappuccino for a while, yeah. Okay. There are no objections, I move that the ZBA grant the request of the planning board to serve as lead agency at, for the action at 2373 South Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that brings us to the end of the agenda, and actually to the end of our work for 2016. So to all of you, whatever holidays you're celebrating, I hope you have a grand time, and also all the best to both of our television viewers.
There might be three tonight.
There might be three, yeah, who knows? Okay, so a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn, and happy new year. We're leaving it here.